Okay, 7:00 PM. The meeting of the District 208 Board of Education will come to order.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Nardi, please give her a vote call, please.
Mr. Durkheim?
Here.
Ms. Skatskam here. Last one. Left.
Here. Here.
Here. Dr. Freitas, recognitions this evening.
Good evening, honorable board members. This is a very exciting moment because today we get to recognize more outstanding Bulldogs. Congratulations to the four RB students who graduated from the Plumbers Local Unit 130 Training Bridge Program. Students who complete this eight-week program with a score of 80% or higher will earn five points toward their apprenticeship exam. Students interview with different plumbing contractors for intent-to-hire letters, which provide an additional five points on their apprenticeship application. These students have the opportunity to join the Plumbers Local 130 next year and begin a five-year apprenticeship. Congratulations to the following students. Darius Ferrer. Isaiah Flores. Congratulations, I'm proud of you. And Marco Vidalis. Congratulations, I'm proud of you. And now, board members, I would like to invite Ms. Valeria, one of the parents who had a student who earned passing marks on the pre-apprenticeship program. Ms. Valeria, please come on up.
I wrote something down. It's about an hour, so I hope you had them. Good evening. My name is Margarita. It is a pleasure to be here this evening and to personally thank the board and the administration for the opportunities that my children have received at RB. My oldest son graduated from RB in 2023, and now my son Marco will be graduating this year. It has been an exciting experience for my kids and for us as parents to see them grow and become responsible and respectful young men. RB has played a key role shaping their future by offering them opportunities like the one given to Marco with the plumbing classes. Now he has a golden mine after graduation. I have to be honest and say that I was not very excited about him going into a trade. But I saw him each week excited about going to his plumbing classes and coming back home very happy about what he learned and created. I realized that it was a great opportunity for him, and most importantly, it made him happy. Marco is excited about joining the Plumbers, and we are grateful to all of you for the opportunities given to students to explore several options and help them to look forward to a great and exciting future. Thank you very much for the opportunity.
Thank you. And here we go. Let's give it up for Carlos Olivaria. Carlos? And folks, now I would like to congratulate one of our wrestlers. He's currently not here at this moment, but he deserves to be recognized because he's made this school proud, and I know his head coach proud. Congratulations to Edgar Mosquera on qualifying for the Boys Wrestling State Championship. Edgar earned fourth place at 120 and was recognized with All-State Honors. And now, folks, I would like to invite our head wrestling coach to share a few more words, Coach Kirby.
Thank you. Everything that Edgar has done over the last four years has been nothing short but impressive. From being called up as a freshman to wrestling against Central to give us momentum to win the duel, to qualifying for state as a freshman, and then placing the last two years has been pretty spectacular. We're going to miss him as a program, but we want to thank the board and the administration for all the support that we've been given over the years, and we look forward to developing more great wrestlers and hopefully play some more at the state tournaments. So, thank you.
Board members, that concludes our recognitions portion for this evening. So everyone, recognize today if we can go ahead and take our pictures, okay?
Mr. Kirby, are you expecting Edgar to come tonight or no?
He was, yeah.
Okay, so if he shows up here in the next few minutes, you can come back in and recognize him.
Okay.
Thank you. Moving on to reports. I don't think we have Student Association this evening. I don't see them here this evening. President's report, just we did a straw poll. We're going to be changing one of the board meeting dates in April. Some more information will be published by the office in the near future. And Dr. Skinkis, superintendent's report.
No superintendent's report tonight. We have several administrative reports, and it's only been two weeks since my last report. So the only thing that occurred in that two weeks' time was the personnel advisory. We got a preliminary review of tonight's report, so no superintendent report.
Okay. Do we want to move on then to Dr. Smetana?
Good evening. Tonight I'll provide the board with financial information for the month of February, which represents 67% of our fiscal year. The monthly summary report shows that the total operating revenue for the month was $3,544,744, with 90% from property tax, 9% from evidence-based funding, which is our state funding, and 1% from Food Service Commission. The total operating expenditures for the month were $2,662,781, with 71% towards salary and benefits, 11% on special education tuition, and 9% on transportation. The next set of reports is the monthly financial statements. The summary of revenue shows that the district has received 63.45% of our budgeted revenue for the year. This percent is slightly higher than this time last year of almost 60%. The summary of expenditure shows that the district has spent 67.63% of our budgeted expenditures for the year, and this amount is tracking exactly where we were at this time last year. And then, as always, I included the statement of revenues and expenditures for the board, both for our board accounts as well as for our activity accounts. Lastly, I have one other additional report tonight. It's just informational for the board. I would share the Township Treasurers Report. We had an additional Township Treasurer Board meeting on March 5th. I included the agenda in the report. The purpose of the meeting was to discuss the possibility of splitting the current Proviso Township Treasurer with Alliance Township Treasurer because they are in need of a treasurer as of July 1. However, the discussion resulted in voting to take on individual Alliance Township districts that are choosing to leave that township instead of sharing the treasurer. So we will, as a treasurer board, decide on an individual basis when school districts apply if we want to have them join the Proviso Township.
So just a comment on that. I mean, I think for the record, the idea of splitting the treasurer of Proviso Township with another TTO, I think, is not sound policy. So I appreciate, I think there probably would need to be legislative changes should additional districts join Proviso. So I'd be curious to see how this ultimately unfolds, but I'm glad that the vote went the way it did.
The idea is, for sure, if anything, to look to add to our treasurer's office, not to split our treasurer. Because if we add school districts, then we can increase our investment pool. We now spread the number of districts splitting the cost of the treasurer's office over more people. We may need to hire an additional person or compensate somebody more, but it's the better directive act to fit to the current standing members is to have an increased pool and not have our treasurer split over two different townships.
And I believe, at least initially, I don't know if it's permanent, but the new members would not have a seat at the board table. At least I know initially. I don't know if that's permanent. Something to explore. But when we add new, if we were to add new districts to the township, I know at least initially they wouldn't have a seat at the table.
Am I incorrect that it would require legislative change to add districts? Or is that a provision that already exists? To have them at the table, I think to be a voting member, they'd have to have a statutory change.
I don't believe there's a legislative change to add them as long as they don't have a seat at the table. But we've not gotten that far yet.
Okay. Is there a timeframe in mind for any of this?
I do believe that we have two districts that would potentially look to join for July 1. So our next board meeting is April 15th, I believe.
What, do you have quarterly? You only have four a year?
We have quarterly meetings, correct.
And this was a special meeting?
Correct.
Okay. Well, thanks for keeping us posted. I appreciate seeing their packet. Thank you.
You're welcome.
There were no questions submitted on your update, correct?
Correct.
Okay.
Okay. Dr. Freitas? Or any other questions for Dr. Smetana I should ask quickly? No? Dr. Freitas?
Good evening, honorable board members. At this moment, I would like to introduce our Assistant Principal Athletic, Mr. Phil Torres, who will present our athletic summary for the winter season. Mr. Torres?
Good evening, everybody. We have our winter summary, and it has the financial information along with participation numbers, some highlights, and then I'll take any questions that there may arise. Some highlights from our winter season are that we had 355 students participate in a winter sport this year, which is up from 309 last year. We had 23 students earn Upstate Eight All-Conference Honors and additional three earning Honorable Mention. 101 students, this is for varsity team members, earned Upstate Eight All-Academic All-Conference, and that is students with an unweighted GPA of 3.5 or higher. And then, boys' basketball team was conference champs. Mr. Kirby, I think he stepped out, but our boys' wrestling team, in addition to Edgar, was also regional champs, and they participated in team dual sectionals again. They also saw 12 of their 14 wrestlers advance to individual sectionals. Our winter POMs took second at IDTA State. And then, we had state qualifiers. Edgar, you had heard, and then Aiden Pancros in swim and Nate Kissel in diving.
Great. Thank you, Phil. Let's go through your next page.
The winter athletic participation and pay to participate comparisons.
Real quick, what page are we on here? I think...
Marion, keep going down.
52, maybe?
53.
53. 53. Board book. Thank you.
There you go. Okay, Phil, go ahead.
I already talked about the participation numbers that you can see on the chart, and then you can see the totals that we collected in the fees for this year. There is a footnote that we did collect some of the fall cheer and POMs. From cheer and POMs, we collected that in the fall, which carried over to the winter. So that reflects the new members that joined in the wintertime. Other than that, it's been pretty much on par with previous years.
So the 355 from the 309, you would attest that to the 44 bowling?
Bowling. And bowling was a nice addition because it reached students that weren't necessarily participating in anything in the wintertime. So it kind of bridged the gap, and a lot of kids that may have done a fall sport and a spring sport, they really wanted to be a three-sport athlete, which is commendable on them. So they joined bowling because they didn't have a winter sport previously. So that's where some of that jump came, and now we have additional three-sport athletes that we did not have previously.
They need to make more plaques, right?
Yes, yes. It's a good problem to have.
But even without bowling, the numbers are trending up.
Phil, with the, or Mr. Torres, the bowling, I know we had some discussions. This year, we implemented only one level. Well, we implemented varsity and JV, but only one coach. Exploratory for next year. If we have, is there a possibility to where we can run those two levels and hire an additional coach for each level if we do separate invites or some separate...
Yeah, we are looking. It was our first year, so it's hard to get into invites and add to the schedule, especially because it was like May and June, and some of those contracts and agreements are already made from the, well, a year in advance sometimes too. So I am exploring options. I did get, I have found some, a couple tournaments for the boys, that it would be a JV tournament and a varsity tournament. And then I'm still working on, we have a couple girls' varsity tournaments, but I'm looking to find some JV tournaments. It's just hard because they're full, and so then when we're new, it's hard to break through. But I'm working on it, and we're going to get there. It may not be perfect next year, but in the following years, now that we have this established program, I think it'll be, we'll find more open doors than closed ones moving forward.
I was going to ask Dr. Freitas to do some initial research on this. I know we've had some questions submitted from our union on it. They were appreciative of adding the stipend for each boys and girls. But most of the coaches, when they went to conference matches, most of the programs in our school conference have two coaches, correct? An assistant?
Yes, that's true.
And some of them will run some JV matches on the side so they can take some extra kids or students. But this way, we should be able to carry, I mean, we carried 29, but then we, of those 29, several were staying back when we were going to meets, correct?
Yeah, because only six bowlers bowl per LMO, so that's 12, and you may take one or two extras just in case somebody gets sick or something happens on the way there. But yeah, there's potential to look at those things and see how it grows. And then, obviously, we're in a pretty big conference right now, so there's a flexibility to try to work together and partner together to potentially throw a lower-level invite together amongst the conference and/or schedule extra matches for some kids that may not get into regular season matches.
So for future reporting, could I ask that you separate boys' wrestling from girls' wrestling? Because girls' wrestling is relatively new, and they are two distinct IHFA sports, right?
That is the plan. They will happen, yes, moving forward.
Because I think you see the jump in growth in '22, '23, and that was likely the addition of girls.
Yeah, girls' wrestling is like, well, girls' wrestling is one of the fastest-growing sports across the country, and like colleges are starting to offer scholarships, and it's growing at the collegiate level too. So, but yes, that was definitely going to happen for next year.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate it.
Okay, anybody have any questions on fees or...
I do, and I'm sorry to throw this at you, but I was just at a meeting on my own college campus where we were talking about women's flag football. I know it's a fall sport. Is there any interest in making that a club or here?
We've had some interest, but right now, and that's not saying that won't change, some of the interest is coming from girls that already play volleyball, or they're on the golf team, or they're on cross country. So like when I've had conversations with some of the students and some of the parents that have reached out, then they go, oh, well, I guess they're going to have to decide like which one are they going to do?
And that's what we talked about as well, is that they...
And so, and then like it kind of, I don't hear from them again because they have to make that decision. But there is that, we're starting to get more inquiries, but I think...
Couple more years.
But that and like the season of the sport is leading to some internal conflict as to what they want to do.
Well, it's similar to our electives, right? Like eventually, if you have too many electives...
You dilute it.
They start to eat each other a little bit, like, right? Where, okay, kids are going to leave volleyball, which we just added the fourth level of volleyball to go play flag football. So then we, you're robbing Peter to pay Paul.
Yeah, it's a little tricky right now.
Okay, that's fine. I just, it was on top of mind because I had that meeting today on my...
Also space.
Yes.
Those running football, marching band, boys' soccer. We're running out of, right? So you only get from three to like nine, three to 10 to use the field. You only have the one field. Any other questions for Mr. Torres?
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you.
Now, I would like to invite our Director of Special Education, Mr. Kevin Baldis, who will be reporting on special education. Mr. Baldis?
Good evening.
Good evening. Let's find the correct page in board book for you before we get started.
It's like in the 30s, I think.
I think it was in the... 36. Thanks, Marion. Good to go.
Glad to be back. Thank you for the opportunity to present the RB Special Education Department update for this school year, 2024-25. First section is just the general view of our staffing for this school year. 15.6 current FTE for special education teachers and case managers. We've got one transition specialist, 19 para educators, spread out from one-to-ones through program aides or classroom assistants. And then, just for projection for next year, we're currently looking at 15 FTE for the '25-'26 school year. Some student information, data right currently. This number does change as the school year goes on, but for right now, we do have 230 students that are currently receiving special education services within our district. 23 of that 230 are attending outplaced educational settings. That is roughly just about a, almost 18% decrease from last school year. It's important to note, four of those 23 are currently in a reintegration process where they are partially attending outplacement school and taking a couple of classes here at RB in hopes that in the near future, they will be coming back to RB full-time either by the end of, probably the start of next school year, depending on how that progress goes. We currently have 22 young adults that are in our transition program. That's almost a 5% increase from last school year. Some demographic information is that we have 160 males in our special education department and seven females. Race breakout is four Asian or Pacific Islander, 20 African-American black students, 119 Hispanic, one Middle Eastern, nine multiracial, and 77 white students within our department. As we look forward to next year and what's coming, we have roughly about 55 students that are exiting as the class of 2025 or taking their diplomas or certificate completion from the transition program. And through our eighth-grade transition meetings, we have roughly about 50 incoming freshmen next year for special education. The next section is just some financials. At RB for this school year, we have a 6.3, about a little over $6.3 billion earmark for our special education program here at RB for this school year. Some breakout numbers from that number is for our staffing, just our RB staffing, is about $3.1 million. Our Lansing cost of services is just a little bit over $1 million, and that covers like our school sites, a nurse, speech pathologist, OTPT, RAP services, and other services that we contract through our special ed co-op at Lansing. Students within our residential placement costs is about $451,000. This year, we started with two students that were in residential placement. We had one student in December earn her diploma and graduate, and she left her residential placement to go on to a vocational school, I think to be an esthetician or to go to some schooling. So that was nice to see her progress through that residential placement into, back into our community and go into, so it was post-high school schooling. There are students that are outplaced. Our tuition costs about a little over $1.5 million this year, and then supplies and paid services, about, almost about $101,000. We do have a transportation budget, our overall transportation budget. 55% of that budget is earmarked for special education transportation. We are responsible to get our students to and from our outplacement facilities or therapy day schools here back and forth between LRB or during the school day to community outings or job locations within the community. The district does receive reimbursement from the state and federal funding. That money is allocated on a percentage basis. What happens is that we get that money back to us from the previous year. So like this year, we received almost $1.1 million back for, towards the budget from the '23-'24 school year. Breakout between that state funding and federal funding. So we've got about $542,000 coming from state and about $533 coming from federal reimbursement from last school year.
Quick question on that. This may be more about Dr. Smetana. Is that a direct allocation or is that transpire through the state, the federal funds? Sorry to put you aside. If you just...
It's a good question. I don't know the answer off the top of my head, but I, I mean, it's categorized as federal in our audit. It's based off of...
So it's part of, when we talk about a single audit, these are the funds we're incorporating?
These are, like, so we get about, last year or this year, budgeted roughly around $900,000 in revenue from federal funds, and that's what puts us over having to do the additional audit. So there are federal funds. Whether or not they pass through the state, I'm not certain off the top of my head, but they do count as federal funds.
Okay. I just wasn't sure what the mechanism for distribution was and if that was potentially going to be impacted.
Do we get a check from the Department of Education or to go through FRIS?
Well, FRIS is the state reporting for every, like, it records everything, that's state or federal. It goes directly to the Township Treasurer, so I'd have to, I don't actually see the check. I just see the deposits. But there was a question, while we're talking about that, there was a question submitted about whether or not we anticipate funding from the federal government. I personally don't foresee us losing all of our federal funding. I think certainly, you know, on any given year, sometimes they prorate things more than other years, and that would certainly, you know, decrease our funding. But I would find it hard to believe that we would lose all of our federal funding. And if they did, you know, that's almost a million dollars in our budget, so that would be hard to make up. I know lots of other schools in the state get even more federal funding, so, you know, we would certainly have to look at, you know, how we could decrease spending if we were to lose all federal funding. But that's not something that I'm anticipating building into the budget because it would be such a, it would be such a burden to have to account for that. So it's something we're monitoring, and certainly I think there might be other changes that happen with Department of Ed federally, but in terms of funding, I don't think we would lose all of our federal funding.
Is this reimbursement, this is more than transportation?
So it's, yeah, so it's, we get money, we actually get money from the state for transportation. So this is room and board, this is idea funds for special ed, and then also for all of our Title I, Title II. If we're talking about federal funding overall, it's Title I, Title II, Title IV. So that encompasses more as well.
Sorry to get sidetracked there.
No, it's okay. It's a very common conversation with my directors' meetings that I'm in. Everybody's trying to figure it out right now, and it's changing every day. So it's a moving thing that's active. So we'll kind of see what happens and then react to it and see what we can do about it when...
And my guess is you won't see it next year. It might be two years from now, right? Because this is based on '23-'24, so next year, like, this time it'll be based on '24-'25. That's kind of right, so you're...
So like our, like, for example, like as Kevin was talking about, you know, we had one student take their diploma that's residential in December. So our federal reimbursement is going to go down next year because...
You won't have that.
We didn't pay a full year of tuition. And we're in board for that. We only paid a semester. So it is based off of the cost that you had the previous year. And I was talking about prorating, a lot of special ed stuff will be prorated depending on the year. 90% is very good.
Yes.
80%.
But it's not a one-for-one reimbursement?
No.
Just to be very clear.
80%, 80% is usually considered a bad year, or sometimes they miss a payment, and then the payment hits the following fiscal year. So stuff like that could happen. I think that's a little more realistic than saying like we would lose all of our federal funding.
It's going to disappear completely, it'll just be really late.
Correct. I think those things are more likely to happen.
Given the fact that different schools are planning differently, have we considered a plan B, C, D, E so that we're not reacting and we know exactly? You know, when you think we're the clear mind, it's easier to make decisions than when all of a sudden you're like, oh, wait, they really did do what they thought they were going to do. Now what are we going to do for the 200 and something students? So just to keep that on the back of our...
We're actually required to meet maintenance of effort for special education. So we actually can't decrease the funding that we put towards special education, so it would have to be towards other areas.
Right, so...
Staff reductions, activity reductions, athletic reductions.
Like, you know, like, no bowling coach.
Be a...
It's like staff reductions, right?
Like, we're talking about staffing tonight.
Yeah.
And so for next year's budget, that's not realistic. So it would have to, in a sense, it does have to be a little reactive because 80% of your budget is staffing. And so if, I mean, cutting a, right?
$5,000 bowling coach isn't going to make it to $1 million.
Correct, or, right, or an $800 stipend for a coffee and tea sponsor, right? Whatever you name it, like, that's not where you really would...
Whatever you name it, like, that's not where you really would be able to make up some of that money.
Given the fact that it is prescribed that we have to fund it, thank God, right?
Yeah.
Well, we have had, we have started to have those discussions about staffing as retirees come up with the division heads and the administration to look at.
And Dr. Smatana, I meet on a regular basis to go over just projections, numbers, things that change, like I said, students going into different placements, changes that budget on it, so we, her and I meet very frequently to go over it.
One follow-up on the projections, you said your projection, you're at fifty-five, you're going to fifty next year, anticipated from the feeder schools. I recall seeing a, like, a multi-year projection of special ed students coming in. Do we see that fifty number staying similar or going up or down in the coming years?
Usually about fifty has been the steady number average every year that we get from our feeder schools coming in every year. Some come and go, but it's pretty, on average, it's about fifty, our numbers have been staying pretty steady.
Okay.
Overall, like, that two-thirty mark for total numbers, but it's been pretty consistent between forty-five.
I recall us having a discussion that there was a larger group of students coming in, maybe we're in that year already, or maybe we've hit that.
Still been pretty consistent.
The one thing we follow in our, in enrollment projections in November is just outplaced.
Maybe that's what I was thinking of, yeah.
So we don't have actually how many kids are coming in with IEPs till Kevin starts to do that in the eighth-grade year, seventh or eighth.
So we have our eighth, third grade transition meetings in January, so right now...
But when we do the enrollment projection report, we do have them report out a number of outplaced kids so that we're counting and accounting for possible tuition placements.
There should be five of those for next year's incoming freshman with a potential of one still coming back next year, barring a meeting later on between, so it's, again, it's a moving number, but yes, always looking at that. Can we meet those needs within our building or not from where they're at currently?
And if that West Forty place ever opens on Cermak, is that anything?
The old St. Louis.
The intention behind that is that LANSI will be housing classrooms there, but it's not any additional services or direct, it's going to be primarily for wards of the state.
Okay.
And then they're going to have some additional classroom space where LANSI is going to use that, so it could impact, maybe reduce or increase regardless of how that flows, classroom rental spaces that LANSI uses. But LRB is our primary outplacement through LANSI.
Okay.
Where we've had some success.
Yes, we have, we did that combined with LT a few years ago with LANSI, and it's been quite successful lately.
It's the old St. Louis.
Okay.
Yeah, there's some information about that program later in the doc that you can read up on, but they did add a enroll program this year as well to LRB.
At LRB, okay.
Which is, we have a couple of students that benefited from that this year. I think the first, next, the pie chart is just a breakdown of our students within special education within the district under a primary disability area. The largest group that we have is in the specific learning disability, which could be math, reading, writing, next would be our OHI, is typically students with ADHD or ADD that fall into that category, next would be autism, or, and then next after that would be emotional disability and then intellectual disability, and then a few, about fourteen kids spread out between the remaining five different category areas. Next, what is, we wanted to take a look at, within our building, what does special education placement look like? Usually students are placed within a general education setting of our current group that we have in the building, there's eighty-eight percent are receiving special ed services in a general education environment, typically co-teaching would be that primary area, or just in genetic classes with special ed support, so maybe push in or pull out from our special education staff. And then there's twelve percent of the students that are attending self-contained programming, which would be like our life skills course, small section, or our transition programs here in the building. This year, some of the focus of the departments and things that we wanted to kind of tackle and go after this year, we saw as a district, I know that the deans came at the last board meeting and presented on attendance, as a group, we decided that we wanted to see what we could do as a department to impact our attendance and our numbers of our kids in front of us on a daily basis. Obviously, we know education is a very interactive sport in a sense, that we needed them to be with us. So the division head, Mark Gory, one of our school psychologists, Pushma Wimbush, two of our special education teachers, Lauren Vara and Sandy Gagan, the dean's office, Cara, Ms. Weinberg and Mr. Hockes, as well as myself, created a group to look at the chronic absenteeism of all the students within our department and see what we can do about it. And they created some protocols, they created a Y form, an opportunity for our case managers to sit with kids that have got ten-day notices, to say what's getting in the way of you not being here, and taking that Y form and then taking some protocols and putting some things in place that we could do as a special education department, which might be above and beyond what we're already doing in the building. Holding IEP meetings to say, okay, visit, maybe do reevaluation, look at some other services, transportation, see what's going in there. They have a case manager that's their one-on-one person anyways, contacting home, bringing in the parents, and just meeting and saying, okay, what, how can RB help you get your son or daughter to school? So far, year one, it's been quite successful, some improvements for some kids, and some kids still struggle, but again, as we reflect on the school years as we go through, is say, what did work, what can we continue to push, and where can we get better with that team? And then, you know, see what, how those improvements continue to grow in the future. So I don't anticipate that team going away next year, I think just reevaluating and reflecting and say, all right, let's do, what are our protocols that we saw that worked and adding some new ones. Next bullet is special data about, obviously, freshman on track is a very important graduation rate. We're looking, you know, as students come in, our case managers are closely following their grades, how they're doing, their programming and placement, and as we hold their annual reviews over the course of those four years, is doing check-ins with the counselors, seeing how their grades are, are they on track to graduate with the graduation requirements, what they're doing in their programming here, to make sure that we keep those rates where we want it to be. Obviously, we want everybody to graduate with a diploma or a certificate of completion, and then moving on to co-teaching and accommodations for ACTs back, and I wanted to address this is that it's, ACT is something that, you know, we're working with our students on, where it's not directly connected to their IEPs, but within those goals and those evaluations that they have in their IEPs, there are things that are implemented and have some positive impacts on their overall progress and growth within ACT and performing well. Through the IEP and having accommodations and modifications maybe met within their classrooms, it allows them to show what they know, and also develops a level of, ensures equity so that they, if they need extended time or whatever they need to have to do well on those tests, it's there for them. They have a legal right to it, and then making sure that we, as case managers and teachers, we're giving them those similar opportunities when they're doing other high-stakes tests within our classrooms. So that when they go to a high-stake test like the ACT, it's not something new, it's not something different, they're comfortable, it's a smaller learning environment, it's something they do on a normal basis, so they can be successful, and they can implement those strategies they have learned through their IEP and from effective case management that they've had while they've been here at RB and continue to be. IEP supports in the future, this is something that's going to be on our radar continuously as laws change, expectations change, but we have to be up in current with the laws of IEPs and writing effective annual reviews and holding those meetings. So the case managers have an ongoing practice of seeking methods and PD opportunities to maintain that growth mindset and creating effective and implementing good IEPs for our students so they can grow and obviously move on and be successful adults. That is, the next point is creating those relationships, giving them access to local colleges. We took some students to Triton last week on a field trip, getting them involved in learning where the center is for student support, is taking their IEP with them. When they graduate or they leave, they have a summary performance that they should take with them that has, this is what I've been doing, it's kind of like a resume, it's like an educational resume, that they can take to almost any state school. A lot of private schools now are taking these SOPs and they're allowing them to use those accommodations in that setting so they can, again, work towards a college degree certification program or vocational opportunity.
What does SOP stand for?
Summary of Performance, thank you for asking, especially when you jargon and the acronyms, I think everybody else...
I had IEP, but you lost me in this one, so that's why.
Yeah, yeah, sorry, sorry. Yeah, Summary of Performance, and that's something that all students that leave RB, have an IEP, leave and take with them, it's a document that they create with their case managers, pretty neat. The next part is our programming here, I'm not going to read all these to you, but just from everything that we do as a building to meet the needs of our diverse learners, from our self-contained programming all the way down to the co-teaching or our transition programming for our young adults that hold on to their, hold their diploma or their certificate completion to go into supportive adult-type of programming. And then LRB, the information about LRB is there, extended school year. Then lastly, I just think it's very neat that our students are all over RB, right? They're in sports, clubs, activities, Special Olympics, group outings, work sites, vocational, like, these are, they're embedded in what we do here, so we try to give them access and to everything that we have at RB. Thank you again.
And the goal for that is at least restrictive, so?
Yeah, so at least restrictive drives...
They want to golf, they can golf.
Yep, we try to get, if they, if there's a sport that we can make, or an activity or a class that we can get them into, that's our responsibility, right? And then we'll find out ways to make it work. If that's what they want to do, we'll get supports. If they can't access that class or that curriculum, then definitely that's our legal responsibility to do that. So thank you again for allowing me the opportunity to come and talk with all of you, it's a pleasure to share what our special education department is doing to support our kids and our diverse learners and what they're doing for our community as well.
Thank you, Kevin.
Thank you. Any questions from anyone else? No.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you, Mr. Walden. Now, we'd like to invite to our system principal with Beth Augustine and Ms. Kylie Lindquist, who present our report, our staffing summary.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Let's get this party started.
I feel like it's been so long since we've seen you guys, I'm sure.
I know. It's your favorite time.
It's been like three months.
We haven't seen you in forever.
I know. I'll talk a little extra since I haven't been here for a while, he loves it when I do that. So thank you so much, everyone. See, making a face? Beth and I have a wealth of information to share tonight about staffing. I have tried to weave any questions, either that we've received from the board or things that have come through to Dr. Freitas, from parents, families, I've tried to weave some questions in throughout the presentation. Feel free to stop me at any point if I start to get too muddy or you need something clarified. As I said tonight, Beth and I are going to present the staffing summary for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. As I indicated in the memo that was accompanying this report, we're currently staffed at one-eleven-point-four FTE for the twenty-four, twenty-five school year, and our goal was to stay pretty consistent.
Hold on, Kelly, Marian, it's down. Keep going, up.
Forty.
There we go. You want to be on the memo, you want her on the memo with you?
Oh, no, she doesn't have to be on the memo, I'm just going to kind of call out a couple of things with the memo, but that summary sheet is really the first page of the report. Our goal was to stay pretty consistent, and we were looking at trying to target one-eleven FTE for next school year, but based on the staffing summary that I am submitting, the one that is on the screen, we're proposing staffing the building at one-ten-point-seven FTE for the twenty-five, twenty-six school year. This comes in two-point-two FTE higher than Dr. Smatana's projection in the fall, which was one-oh-eight-point-five FTE based on that pure mathematical numbers and not putting it into programming yet. So that memo I shared also includes a quick review of our sectioning and staffing process, which we've gone over with the Board of Education before, as well as a review of our class size ratios that we use to drive the number of sections allocated to any particular course. Within this review of class size ratio, I think it bears noting that the district has moved all music classes to a thirty-to-one ratio of staffing for the purposes of sectioning and staffing moving forward. This thirty-to-one staffing ratio matches electives in all other areas of our building except for PE. Previously, most music classes were staffed with PE at the forty-to-one, and we've moved that to thirty-to-one moving forward. Moving on from the memo, you can see in the first page of the report itself, that is the summary of FTE and class averages for the twenty-four, twenty-five, and twenty-five, twenty-six school years. This summary document shows the current FTE in comparison with the proposed FTE for next year and then tracks the changes to that FTE as well. So by department, you can very clearly see the changes from this current year to next year's FTE, but I want to add some context to those changes for you so you know kind of what accounts for those differences. Applied arts is down point-one FTE for next school year due to a dip in requests in tech ed courses. Our English FTE is proposed to be down a point-five for next school year, and this is based on some of our English electives not having that minimum threshold to run, and we've also looked at some places where we can staff classes a little bit larger than we did this current school year. Fine arts FTE overall is down a point-one FTE due to fewer student requests in the visual arts, and I want to pause right there and just tease one bit of information out so that you have some context around it. While I'm talking about fine arts, we're looking at that fine arts FTE projected for next year at four-point-five FTE. Of that FTE, two-point-six of it is allocated for music classes. I mentioned earlier, the district changed the class size for all music classes to thirty-to-one moving forward, previously they had been staffed at forty-to-one. To get to the FTE number in any particular section, in any particular content area, when we do this, we always take the total number of student requests and we divide it by that class size ratio, whether it's a twenty-five-to-one lab class, a thirty-to-one elective, or a forty-to-one PE. So for music, going forward, we've used that thirty-to-one class size ratio. Last year, we heard very clearly from students and their families that they valued in music being able to select a year-long course for a semester. That was very important, we had a student board member speak about it, it was a very important ask. So in doing the music staffing, we were looking at each semester respectively so that we could look at course requests for each semester. In counting student requests for music by semesters for next year, we noticed there were three-hundred-and-thirty-five student requests for one semester and two-hundred-and-ninety-seven student requests for the other semester. So we're able to look at both semesters separately. However, when we determine FTE, we take the highest of the two semesters, and, so that was three-hundred-and-thirty-five, and to get our section numbers, we divide that by thirty, that's the new ratio for music. So when we divide three-hundred-and-thirty-five, I did this math ahead of time, so for the people who are good at math on the board, I did do this math ahead of time, Lindsay, I used a calculator, when we divide three-hundred-and-thirty-five by thirty, we get eleven-point-one-six sections. What's a, what's a point-one-six of a section? So what we knew is that in order to staff for those three-hundred-and-thirty-five student requests in music, we would need eleven-point-one-six sections, we rounded that up to twelve sections. With twelve sections allocated for music student requests in each semester, the FTE actually mathematically works out to two-point-four. You have five semester classes that make a teacher whole in one semester. So with twelve sections, you have a full-time teacher, a full-time teacher, and two classes hanging out there, and that's a point-four. However, the district made the decision during the sectioning process to allocate two-point-six FTE to music to keep music consistent with this current school year, and we did not reduce music at all for the third year in a row, despite that mathematical calculation being that the FTE should have actually been two-point-four, we kept them consistent. So I just wanted to kind of tease that out because that's something new, that thirty-to-one ratio in music is something new. So I want to pause again to just answer a couple of things that have come to Dr. Freitas. With looking at music classes by semester, we've been made aware of two issues. The first, we had a student that requested a full year of music classes, and when their course verification got mailed home to them, it was only representative of one. That issue has already been fixed, and we always encourage all students and families to look at that course request, that's how we catch those errors. So if there is an error on any course request for any student course, not just music, we encourage students and families to reach out to the counselor. Similarly, we know that we have switched to School Links this year as a part of our registration process, and we noticed one instance of a family that was, because the music semesters were teased out as a semester, one family was double-charged because the charge for the course was stuck on both semesters. That has also been rectified, and we are assured that all of our course fee statements will be correct when families come in for residency in the summer. So just wanted to put that there because it's something that came up in questions to Dr. Freitas. Back to regularly scheduled programming.
Can you repeat for me just very quickly? Three-thirty-five was the fall enrollment, and you gave a number for spring?
Three-thirty-five was one semester, and two-ninety-seven was the other semester.
Two-ninety-seven, thank you.
Yeah, so we used three-thirty-five to staff because that was the bigger of the two.
Approximately forty, yes.
Yeah.
Okay.
Moving on to mathematics... Moving on to mathematics, we did see a slight dip of 1.1 FTE because of the way that the cap sectioning shook out for this year. So there's a very small, there's a very small change there in math. In science, we're actually down 0.2 FTE. What we noticed with this year's junior class is we're seeing fewer students elect for that fourth year of science, and we also had some spaces where we could run classes a little bit bigger. We talk about bad breaks in the sectioning process, and sometimes that can have an impact, 0.2 FTE one way or the other in terms of how many kids requested and then what that looks like when you try to split it into sections. In social science, we actually saw an increase of .4. We're seeing an increase in elective sections of AP Psychology and AP European History for next year. In wellness, we held flat with no change to the FTE. And in world language, we've seen an increase in the number of students in our heritage speaker courses, so that accounts for the increase in world languages of a .4.
Kylie, before we move on, so Ms. Gasko, you asked earlier about, well, how would you address, or how do you start to look to address? Should our federal funds be reduced? So for example, in science, we're going down 0.2, but we have, we'll have two, we have a retirement, and we had a teacher that had to resign for personal reasons. So instead of replacing that 2.0, we're going to be staffing, I think, at a 1.6. So that, that's an example of where we didn't have to reduce anybody or cut any teachers, but at the same time, we were able to save .4 worth of salary towards the general ledger. So that would be an example of like, as we prepare over the next few years with more retirees, if we are starting to see reduction in funding from the state or federal, that's a way that we could address it without having to actually cut people that are already here.
So if you move on, I'm sorry. Okay, okay. If you move on to that required FTE section, still on that same summary sheet, you're going to see that most categories are unchanged. Adaptive PE, division heads, EL, library, social workers, counselors, instructional technology, those things are all static. The FTE for special education is in the required FTE section because we have that legal obligation to our special education students that Mr. Baldis just went over. So we're down in special education for next year as well. And you are going to notice there are a couple of key changes in this required FTE summary. The first change that you'll notice is that the FTE given to credit recovery is going from .2 to .4. This is obviously some of our most at-risk students and some students that really need that extra support to get them over the finish line and get them graduated. You will also notice that this school year, we allocated .4 FTE to literacy coaching, and next year, you'll see that that is a zero. Literacy coaching has historically been some work with students, but more predominantly a teacher-facing intervention. So what we have done for next year is we've taken that FTE and we've repurposed it. You will see the .4 that came away from literacy coaching housed in the growth in academic intervention and a little bit of growth in algebra academic support. Those interventions are student-facing interventions that we've worked on a new structure where students will be in an intervention every single day of the week. Next year, we're targeting sophomores and juniors that are struggling in both math and English. Many of our freshmen off-track are within that population where we are taking that FTE and putting it more rigorously at student interventions.
Questions about the literacy coach?
Mm-hmm.
So that .4, will that work now be picked up by division heads or?
So the literacy coach FTE was FTE out of the English department where the literacy coach would work with teachers to potentially make their lessons more robust in terms of reading skills of that nature. That's not necessarily something I think that we need to replace one-for-one. It's something that, in the way that we structure how we do professional development or how we support teachers through PLC, we can absorb that way.
Just want to make sure that the teachers that are taking advantage of the literacy coach support will, they won't feel a change or less support.
Yes.
Because we still want to make their lessons robust.
Yes.
Thank you.
Does the peer evaluation model help with that at all?
It does. You're getting, you're getting probably more coaching out of that, that program than probably there, I would say there are very few teachers relative to who's in peer evaluation that took advantage of that support. So yeah, that's definitely one way that it's built in.
And I can speak from personal experience, what I have in my work environment, I'm seeing people that use it, are using it to differentiate reading, and some of that's automated a little bit through AI or different levels for reading, so some of that's getting built in a little bit more.
And with our MTSS work too, and our MTSS leadership team, one of the things that we have really been focused on in that team is what are we as a leadership team, an instructional leadership team, going to do to support teachers to intervene at that tier-two level in their own classroom without someone having to take their kids? So that's something that we are building as well. So then lastly, on this summary sheet, you will see that the last section shows a five-year historical look at the projected FTE that Dr. Smetana does in the fall versus the actual FTE and what that change has looked like over the last five years. Questions on that summary sheet before I toss it to Beth and let her go to the next part?
Good job, Kylie. Let's toss it to Beth.
Okay. I don't have much to say.
Are you sure?
No, I don't. So what you're seeing here are 14 classes that we are asking for board approval to run because they are under 20. Some of them are ones that you see every year. Three of them are intervention courses of the 14.
Is that computer science discoveries? Has that been rebranded? Did that have a different name before?
No.
Not the same?
This is the master long class.
It's kind of like our intro to computer science.
Is that what that is? Okay.
Yes, yes. And then we have the two other AP courses.
Okay.
What is the tier-three reading?
So those are our most at-risk students, freshman reading, and then tier-two is students that have a little bit more ability, but these are primarily our special education The second page, these are singleton classes that are over 20, but they are not at the class cap. So this is just sharing information, and many of these are classes that, you know, maybe we can add transfer students to, to build up some of the enrollment once the school year starts.
And I see on there is that human growth and development, that's one that had to be canceled last year, right? So it's nice to see it.
Correct, yes. The third page, these are singleton classes that are running slightly over the cap.
So for this one, can I interrupt you?
Absolutely, yes.
On the singleton classes that are over the class cap, you will notice on this, this part of the report, there are five classes there. They're all music courses. If you were to look back at the courses that we are asking for board approval to run under 20, you're going to see five courses, five music courses on that document under 20. So what this is really doing, the teacher leader in music, as is in any other department, is given the latitude to decide sometimes some classes run larger and sometimes some classes run smaller so that you can run all of the classes. So there's kind of like, there's, as there are five over the class cap, there are five under. So for example, in an academic course, this might look like a year where we only have 11 students that want to take AP Spanish literature. And we don't want to not run it, we want to be able to run it, so we might choose that we're going to run Spanish I and Spanish II at a little bit larger of a class size to be able to give us that kind of room. So that's a very typical decision that we make. This isn't something that you have to vote on, but for informational purposes, it makes more sense when you see it in the context.
And it's the division heads' purview.
Yeah, we engage, the teacher leader in this case, we engage the teacher leader in that. So if we want to be able to run a class like chamber choir for semester one at 13, then the teacher leader for music was able to say, okay, because there are only six kids signed up for honors jazz next year, we want to run honors jazz and jazz together because we value being able to run that choir separately even though the numbers are smaller.
And, no, and also with singleton courses, when we set the cap, if the cap is over with students, those students would conflict out when building the master schedule. Well, we obviously don't want to conflict students out of their music classes, so that's why keeping those caps where the number of students are at is where it will be when we build the schedule. And then, this is new this year, I think it was something that was requested on the fourth page, these are the classes that we canceled due to low enrollment. And I, when we make a decision to cancel a class, part of the reason of doing that is to then look at the students' alternative classes so that we can then funnel them into the classes that are actually running. If we did this after the fact, there wouldn't be a guarantee that the student would actually get a course that they would like to take. And then I looked back at the courses that we canceled for the current school year. We canceled 16 this year, we canceled 15 last year, and of the 16 that we canceled this year, 13 were the same for the current school year. So you're seeing sort of the same courses, and I know that's what Kylie and the division heads are looking at in part of their curriculum guide review.
Yeah, through our curriculum guide review, we're trying to identify what are those courses that we need to take out of the curriculum guide because year over year, they're not running, so that we make sure that we're telling students the classes that they have to pick from that are going to potentially be viable.
And it's a good problem to have that a school our size, we have so many electives, but then what happens is it just starts getting spread so thin that you just can't run everything.
As we see a couple of them, like hip-hop dance, that's got a class cap of 40, so I get that, but spring individual sports, also a higher one, acting and directing, and I know acting and directing was also one of those from last year, but is there any push to get those closer to, or to be able to run at the lower number, obviously under 20, but are we at a point where there's any push within a department or marketing? That's something to get kicked off, I recognize that, that whether it's hip-hop dance, that one has run before, correct?
Yes.
It has.
And acting and directing, I don't think has run in a couple of years, if not many years, so just wondering if that's something that, it's either departmental or is it through the counseling division that there can be some push to see if they'll run?
So we, we, I think, do a very good job of the counselors not pushing courses because that's not really, that's not really their role. But within the divisions, absolutely. So this year, our, the director of RBTV did a new showcase of all of our electives where he did video interviews with all of the people that teach our electives, and then the theater schools were able to show the video kind of at their leisure instead of us like storming the castle and bringing all these people in. We got really good feedback from that because that video now lives on our website, and so families are able to go home and go, hey, I think they were talking about that one class, let me go to that section and let me hear about it. So we've started kind of looking at how do we advertise offerings across the board. Some of our classes through our curriculum guide review, we've talked about needing a rebrand, right? Computer Science Discoveries is a great class. I don't know if everybody knows that that's a really good gateway into AP Computer Science, Principles AP Computer Science A. Do we need to just call it Intro to Computer Science? Does that make more sense, right? So part of it is how are we, how are the courses branded for us, and then how are we trying to sell those courses to students? I think teachers in different departments have different ways that they go about that. I know that in our math department, always around course selection time, they go through in their classes, all of the math offerings that there are. I know our fine arts teachers have joint concerts with theater schools that come over, and we go over there as much as possible. So it looks a little differently in all of the departments, but all of the departments make whatever their concerted effort looks like to kind of bring in the kids that will take those classes. But to Dr. Skengus's point, you end up kind of eating your own, right? Mark Helgason is my division head for humanities. The more that he sells speech communications, for example, those might be kids that come out of his clarion class. So it's kind of, you know, six in one hand, half doesn't in the other.
Okay, thank you.
I think you did it. Oh, sorry.
Just a quick question. So on the curriculum guide review, because I know I'm looking at fine arts survey, jumped off the page, right? We haven't offered it in a number of years. So when do we think that process of reviewing the guide and making sure that we don't have these kind of one-offs where people then have to go back to their counselor and say, I couldn't take fine arts survey, what do I take? It just sort of avoids those middle steps. When do we think that process will be?
We're tentatively looking at late spring, I think, for our curriculum advisory council, so maybe late May. We have done some work, we've done a kind of a first preliminary scrub, all of us with the curriculum guide. Now, I'm in the process of making those changes that we've found that were kind of the immediate changes, right? Like a leftover instructional coach instead of a division head, or, you know, where there might be just some things that are errors or outdated language. So those immediate changes are coming in now, and then we're going to sit with the next draft again. So by the time the teachers are gone, I think for sure, we're going to be ready to say, let's take a look at.
And that's where this will occur, like to say like, this class is not run for five years.
Yes, yes.
I probably have 15 years' worth of data on classes that have run due to low enrollment.
And so when that, when that goes through, it'll be, normally I come to the board sometime in the spring and I talk about proposed course changes, right? We want to change this course description, or we want to add this course. What that presentation will look like will be much more significant because we will essentially be saying, here are all of the changes that we are looking to make in the curriculum guide, and here's the why, and then the board would have to take action on all of them. So that's why we think that that'll be probably a late May.
But it will be for enrollment for '26, '27.
Before next fall.
Yes, yes, because the new guide comes out in advance on October.
Okay. Just wanted to, that was my drop dead deadline, I wanted to make sure you were working towards that, because I think it's, it's a discussion that I know it's been a lot of work, but it needs to be done, so.
Yeah.
Kylie, the last page, I know you already covered a lot of the music, so this just highlights for the board how the two semesters broke out. So the one thing that was odd is last year, but now that I look at it again, last year's spring semester went up, and this year's spring semester goes down. It's basically because of that studio music production at one elective class.
Yes, potentially, yes.
This year, we're going to run it first semester, so you have 25 kids signed up for it.
Yeah, I noticed that.
Right? Last year was 34.
Yes.
I figured it would more trend, like the only, I figured it would be more trend where like students that maybe like marching band but then need to pick up another class or want to try another elective. You see a drop in nine for next year from 39 to 28, and then you see a drop or an increase in choir from 13 to 19. Other than that, it's mostly that, one elective course is the big swing.
Yes. And that, right, then that again was this, this year just worked out that the, the way the staffing went, that it made sense in that second semester.
And so the board understands why I told the administration just to use the highest numbers because most of those classes are year-long classes. There's not a lot of switch, there's nine kids, three kids, one kid, right? Like, it's better to just staff those for the year. So we added an extra .2, and that keeps, then we can keep our choir teacher with those three classes and continue to run that like we have for the last three years. Kylie, good job. Any other questions, board members?
No, and I see the classes that were running under 20 were pretty close to the 20 mark. We don't have those like fives and sevens like we had last year. It's definitely much more even this year.
Okay. Good job, everybody.
Thank you. And we will vote on the under 20s later on in the agenda. Correct me if I'm wrong?
Correct.
Yes. Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you, thank you. Last but not least.
Dr. Frey, you got to finish your report.
Oh, I was going, I was jumping to the students, I'm sorry. I apologize, Dr. Freitas.
We work closely together.
Okay.
Okay, I'll get us started. So coming up in March, you know, in two weeks, we have a spring break, the 24th through the 28th. April, we'll be doing the ACT for the first time in quite a few years digitally. It's an all-school testing day, grades nine through 11, about eight to 12:30 locations out throughout the classroom. Seniors are, have a college and career day. It is not an off day. It is an opportunity for the seniors with their parents, with their folks, relatives, whoever they love, to go out and explore, you know, certain universities.
Because they should be making their final decisions.
That's right. Under school. Under school culture and operations, we have a trade spirit coming up in two days. Today, I was so happy to see how many college here, you guys saw me live. And then we're complementing not only those college opportunities, but with those vocational opportunities as well. Because at RB, we believe that students have made, can choose, or should choose, and have the opportunity to have many paths of success, whether it's two-year, four-year, military, vocation, et cetera. So we have a trade spirit coming up there. We just presented our athletic summary, and we have on the eighth, we have a RB baseball youth camp, 11:30 to 1:00 in the fieldhouse. Emma, Olivia?
Good evening, honorable board. So for our student advisory report, we'll begin with teaching and learning for the month of March. We have a third quarter reflection. I'll start off. We're, I'm happy to announce that we're halfway through the second semester. Third quarter was full of sports, events, club meetings, fundraisers, and opportunities for students to learn, grow, and thrive here at RB. For me, I have been applying to different scholarships in preparation for college. I've also been applying to different summer programs, and I'm also finalizing college decisions as well. And I'm also happy to share that I have all A's this semester. Fourth quarter began yesterday, and I am currently preparing for the final stretch of the year alongside other students. And I'm looking forward to the last moments with the RB class of 2025.
All right, and then as for me as well, kind of going off of what Emma said, same thing, applying to scholarships, making sure that everything financial aid wise is kind of being set in stone, especially, like mentioned, it's kind of that time where seniors are starting to commit in everything. So last quarter goal is just making sure to end the year on a good note as well. I know a lot of seniors are dealing with senioritis right now, and it's definitely a very hard thing to get through. But I also commend our teachers who are motivating us to get through the last kind of stretch for our senior year before we head out and before graduation. So I also thank our teachers for that as well, to kind of help push us through. Just as well, finding the last chance to like enjoy new clubs and activities. I think a big part of your high school experience is also just finding new things to be involved in. And so I think, you know, trying to go to a new club meeting, see if there's anything that you can help out with when it comes to things like prom, maybe going to an essay meeting, seeing how you can help out with Spirit Week, things like that. So that's another way that I know we're both looking to end our semester. And then also, we're just excited to see what the end of the year is going to bring for us, and, you know, with the class 2025, and we'll see what the future has in store. So, yeah.
Thank you. Thank you, Olivia. Thank you, Emma.
Now, we're moving to school culture and operation. For the month of March, on the 11th, we have a college planning test for juniors, which occurred tonight. The, it began at 6:10, earlier this evening, included at 6:45 PM. It was presented in the auditorium, and it was brought to you by Student Services in honor of College and Career Week. And it was an opportunity for junior students and parents to gain insight into what the college application process is like. Moving on to activities and athletics for the month of March, on the 3rd, we had a UEC Leadership Conference. It was hosted here at RB, and 12 out of 14 schools in our Upstate A Conference attended. It was a chance for students here, as well as neighboring schools, to connect. And it was managed by student association sponsors, Mr. Davis and Ms. Yola, alongside our own student association exec board. And on the 18th, the choir and orchestra, our choir and orchestra will have a concert at 7:00 to 8:30 PM in our auditorium. You will hear a piece prepared by students with the guidance of Mr. Loeb and Ms. Smithana. And so we ask that you come out to support our wonderful choir and orchestra students.
All righty, and then as well, the winter band concert is actually going to be taking place tomorrow. So this will include performances from the variety of bands that students partake in, like orchestra, jazz, things like that. So this will begin from 7:00 to 8:30 PM, and this will be in the auditorium for parents and for anyone in the community to come enjoy some music. As well, on the 19th, is the NHS initiations. This is going to be from 7:45 to 9:00 PM, and this is going to be in the auditorium. So this introduces the class of 2026 into our chapter of the National Honor Society, and the initiation is going to include work from Dr. Freitas, Ms. Thomasek, who is our NHS sponsor, and the NHS current exec board. So we're extremely excited to welcome the new class of 2026 for NHS. In April, we have the IHDSA State Showcase, which is a dance concert that's going to be held at RB. It's going to be from 11:38 AM to 8:30 PM. So this will kind of be an all-day event, and it's going to be, take place in multiple spaces throughout the school. And then on the 8th, is going to be the boys lacrosse senior night. So this is RB versus Kenwood. This time is going to take place around 5:30 PM, and this is going to be in the Kennely Athletic Complex. So we encourage students in our community to come out and support our senior lacrosse players as they enter the final stretch of their senior season. And that concludes our report. Thank you so much.
Thank you. Dr. Freitas.
And that concludes all of our reports.
I just jumped back and forth right there, so I apologize. Thank you. Thanks for all the future events coming up here. Moving on to FOIA requests, we have three FOIA requests, Dr. Skinkis?
Yes, three. One from SEIU regarding our commercial information in regards to building, maintenance, and custodial staff. Another one from Smart Pure Cure, which you guys see on a probably quarterly basis. And then Michael Ross from Lula Data regarding our copiers, excuse me, copies of our current prostitute casualty insurance. I don't know why I said copier, I forgot the copier bid tonight. But it was asking about our casualty insurance policies, including premium summary documents, et cetera.
Any questions or comments from anyone? Okay. And district goals, were there any updates this evening?
District goals, the Board of Education will receive a report. We felt it would be best to do the Board of Education annual goal report. So Ms. Fletcher will touch on communication, Dr. Freitas, DEI, Ms. Lindquist and Ms. Augustine on the curriculum and instruction and SEL goal, and Dr. Smithana on the finance goal. We will do that at the first meeting in April.
Okay. April meeting. Visitor comments, do we have anyone here for visitor comments this evening? Anyone coming up? Okay, see, let's see. Additional discussion items, anyone on the board have an additional discussion item they'd like to just add to the agenda?
Okay. Even though I'm leaving the board at the end of April, I thought it might be good for the board to decide if you still want to have two meetings both in January and two meetings both in February. Looking back, some of those meetings were like five or 10 minutes, which while it's, you know, okay, great, we're done early. Speaking as someone who comes a far way to get to these meetings, it might be beneficial to possibly combine at least one of those meetings, one of those months, especially February, it's a short month, into just one meeting that month versus having two board meetings.
So I will say I'm going to miss your wisdom moving forward quite a bit. And that's a small example of it, I don't mean to belittle it. I think it's a great idea. I did ask Dr. Skinkis to look at the calendar, we won't set the calendar until...
Yeah, that's, I know there's plenty of time, and if it doesn't work, or if you need it, because, oh, there might be a snow day, but just something to consider.
And then bill payment requirements, right?
Yeah, but every 30 days or whatever.
Does anyone have any kind of objections on its face to that idea?
Well, I think it's just this year that they were short, but there's been plenty of, you know, we're going to start, we're going to do the report on the school safety. We'll have a different project on some more projects. I think this year has been an anomaly year in the past many, if we look at how long the meetings were. I would hate to make a significant change like that based on one year.
That's just a suggestion.
Well, I think if you look at the board calendar, the same reports are scheduled at the same point of time. So when you have the committee of a whole and the bill review, I think the idea would be just combine that in one month, so you'd be able to cover some reports.
The January meeting could easily be combined, to where there's only one meeting in January, because you're coming out of the semester. So everybody's coming back from winter break, and then we have a meeting almost immediately from winter break.
I think we've been having it on the Tuesday we return to class.
So that's strictly like just bills, and then the other report that's in January is the first semester discipline data. So if you could combine those two and have one meeting in January, that would probably be the simplest way to do it.
We have how many meetings in December? We have one, two, right?
So the calendar has been consistent for about the last five years. We have six months, we're two meetings since six months with one. We have one meeting in December, one meeting in March, and then one meeting in June, July, and August, and one in November. So we only have six months where we have two. The one that there's a possibility of combining would be the January, would probably be the easiest, because you're coming out of, you know...
You've been closed for two weeks.
You've been closed for over, probably when you add everything up to more than two weeks, there's not much to report on or taking place, so.
Just roll it around.
I mean, I think it's up to the administration to kind of give us a draft schedule of meetings, and if there's some content, we always have the ability to call a special meeting. Nothing's ever prevented us from doing that.
Yeah, I just, I feel uncomfortable making that decision on one year, because we only have six months where we have two meetings, so.
Well, I think it'll be a discussion for the new board when it's constituted, right? I think so, you know, you're, you know, based on not just this year, but I would say the last three or four years, these have not been particularly lengthy meetings. So any efficiency from, you know, not our time, but the students' time and staff time, I think, would be appreciated all around. But I think we can talk about it in April.
Yeah, I mean, because I'm looking over 20 years, and it's been, this has been an anomaly, yeah.
Okay, well, people can jump in. Anything else, discussion item? Any more suggestions? Looking at Ms. Locke, in case she has some other ones to bring up. Okay. Consent agenda, we have a number of items on the consent agenda. Did anyone request anything to be moved out of this?
No, there were no questions, nor were there any questions to be moved out.
Okay, Ms. Gasko.
All right. The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, takes the following action on the listed consent agenda items. Approves minutes from the meetings held on February 11, 2025, and February 25, 2025, open and close sessions. Out-of-state overnight field trip request, the Varsity Cheer Summer Trip, NCA Summer Cheer Camp at Carthage College in Wisconsin from July 7 through the 9th, 2025. Student Handbook, 2025 through 2026, and IHSA membership for the 2025-2026 school year, as presented in the March 11, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke, all in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? Okay. That's our consent calendar. Under old business, do we have anything to discuss under life safety items, capital improvements, or sustainability?
Life safety, there's just a draft that Dr. Smithana included. There's no action to be taken on this. This is just informational at this point in time, but we placed it under life safety. This is our next life safety report. We're still going through it with the architect to see if what can be moved or what can be submitted as amendment at a later date. This will give you an idea of some of the work that's coming in, or it needs to be addressed.
So there's a deadline by which we need to receive the final life safety report, correct?
Yeah, it's typically required every 10 years, but it's from when the state approves. My understanding is from, it's from when the state approves your last life safety, not when you actually did it. So like, we did our last life safety in the fall 10 years ago, but by the time the state approved it, it was, there was a significant lag time. So at the next board meeting, we will have a lot of the same information, it'll be in a different format. I made this one in easy-to-read format. Next time, I'll provide the official document from ISB that we have filled out that we need the board to approve. And that will be the items that we're actually submitting now that are on our 10-year life safety study. What Dr. Skinkis was referring in this draft, our architect included the roofs. We're not planning on doing the roofs until 2029, and so it doesn't make sense to put them on the 10-year study, because, one, you don't need them now, and, two, then we're kind of locked into that price, and when you do work five years later, the price is going to go up. But our roofs are under warranty, so it doesn't make sense to do them now or submit them now. So what we do is we submit amendments to the state when we're ready to do that life safety work. So we will have an updated final version at the next board meeting for the board to approve.
And there were no questions submitted on this list? I think this was a very good format to read through.
I didn't see that question. I did see the roof and was wondering, how does that play in with the solar? I think we've had that discussion, but with the solar panels and what that would look like.
The solar panels are going in the new sections of the roof.
Okay.
Which have at least 20-plus years under their warranty. We intentionally did not put solar panels on the roofs.
Okay, and that was part of our discussion on the three different options.
Okay.
Are we going to do a life study, a life safety study? Like where they go through the whole building?
That's what this is.
This is the result of that.
Okay. So my suggestion is if I have any more questions, we'll see it in a slightly different format in the next meeting, but we should be prepared to move forward, is what I'm hearing. Correct, okay.
Textbooks, there were no questions submitted on textbooks. So I'm assuming the board is ready to take action tonight.
Any comments on that one? Okay.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the adoption of the textbooks for the 2025-26 school year, as presented in the March 11, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Mr. Van Horst. We need a roll call, please.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Sinek?
Yes.
Ms. Van Horst?
Yes.
Ms. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. And the copiers, I don't think there were questions on this either. We discussed it some last meeting?
Correct.
Did you have an update? We found two districts that had done five-year leases with Canon. Both mentioned increased service calls and maintenance in the fifth year. However, both also acknowledged that they either did or are planning a subsequent five-year lease, so the issues didn't prevent them from doing another five-year lease. So the administration is moving forward with negotiating a five-year contract with Canon. It's rather lengthy, and our attorneys are reviewing it, so I hope to have it for the board's review at the next meeting. I don't know if that is feasible, depends on how long the attorneys go back and forth for.
Thank you for the update, and thanks for the getting back to us on the duration. But we'll see a copy of that, obviously, in the next packet then. Okay. Thank you. New business payment of bills, no questions were submitted here?
No, there were, there were two questions submitted.
I apologize.
They were separate of the board packet, they were when we issued the bills initially. So the first one was about the vouchers and reissuing checks, because we had a few vouchers where we had to reissue some checks. We believe they got lost in the mail. We tried to do direct deposit for as many cases as possible to avoid it.
We see a trend in this, though.
It's hard, yeah, there's a trend with, you know, unreliable mail, but it's sometimes hard if it's a one-time check, or it's not a regular vendor.
A new vendor, yeah, I get it.
Then it can happen. There was another question submitted, it was on Board Book Page 348, in regards to a class refund. So I apologize, there wasn't enough detail. It is for age group gymnastics. So we will, we will make sure it says age group gymnastics in the future. However, if for some reason we also don't provide enough detail, if the board looks over to the right, they can see where the account that it comes from.
Little teeny tiny print.
Yes. And that will also provide more detail, but we will make sure it says age group gymnastics moving forward as well.
I was looking at it on my phone, so it was even smaller. Thank you.
There's no way you could have seen that. Any other questions this evening on this? No?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the payment of bills, as presented in the March 11, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second. Second from Ms. Locke, we need a roll call, please.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes.
Ms. Flat?
Yes.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Mr. Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Yes. Next is the minimum course enrollment approval. We heard the presentation on earlier this evening. Were there any additional questions? No?
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves in accordance with District Policy 6:31, minimum course enrollment, the list of courses for the 2025-2026 school year with projected enrollment below 20 students based on the current student enrollment data, as presented in the March 11, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
We have a second, please. Second from Mr. Van Horst, we need a, all in favor on this one? All in favor?
Aye.
Any objections? The ayes have it. And then the DWC, excuse me, Members School District Resolution, who's going to speak to this?
This is the first read for the board, but this is more of a formality. I think it's something that you could consider improving tonight. Our director from LADZI serves as the representatives for the school districts, for the 15 school districts. We are one of 92 members in the DWC. And so what this resolution is approving, all 92 different districts have to approve the resolution, but it's more or less approving it to go from a board to an oversight panel. The main thing that DuPage West Cook Board provides is for the needs of the deaf and hard of hearing and the visually impaired. So a bunch of cooperatives all then, like LADZI, similar to LADZI from around the area, feed into these two schools. And so to have some type of governing board oversee that, this is what the recommendation is, is to remove from being a board of directors to an oversight committee.
So what's our representation on the oversight committee?
One person, our director from LADZI represents.
So it's not a 96-person board, it's, we feed through LADZI?
LADZI represents our 15 districts of the 92-member districts.
Oh, now I'm seeing that part, okay.
So again, like I mean, we could put it on for a second read, there's not much that would really change or.
Or we can just put it as a consent item for next month, we'll just do that? Or do you want it done tonight?
If you can approve it tonight, it's one less thing we got to carry over for four weeks. It's up to you.
Any objection to my left?
To my right?
No, it's, it's not monetary, it's administrative, so I'm okay with it.
The Board of Education Township High School District 208, Cook County, Illinois, approves the DWC Members School District Resolution, approving the proposed amendment to the DWC Intergovernmental Agreement, as presented in the March 11, 2025 Board Agenda Packet.
Second.
Second from Ms. Locke, we need a roll call.
Ms. Novak?
Yes.
Van Horst?
Yes.
Mr. Durkin?
Yes.
Ms. Gasko?
Yes.
Ms. Roscoe?
Yes. Yes.
Mary Ann, if you could just.
And me.
Oh, sorry, Ms. Locke.
Ms. Locke is a yes as well.
She's not gone yet.
Ms. Nardi, can you just email a copy of the resolution then and then vote to LADZI, please?
Visitors comments, does anyone want to speak at this point in the meeting?